Meeting for City of North St. Paul for November 1st. Jenny, if you can take the role?
Councilmember Thorson's absent. Councilmember Peterson?
Here.
Councilmember Wong?
Here.
Councilmember Cole?
Here.
Mayor Furlong?
Here. Councilman is present. A motion to adopt the agenda.
I move, Your Honor.
Moved by Councilmember Peterson. Sent by Councilmember Cole. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And we do have some topics tonight, but I just want to say that we did have an incident today in the city. Prayers go out to the, you know, family and to all the people who had to deal with the situation today. I know it's an active investigation, so we really don't know much information right now. But we are not going to have the police chief here tonight. Recommended from the city manager that he's dealing with a lot of things tonight. So our support goes out to all of them, and we'll just table all the items that he was going to deal with tonight in the regular council meeting. We'll also have an adjustment to the, to the schedule. So I'll turn over to city manager Frandl.
Thank you, Mayor. So the first two topics will be polled, which is the police department staffing update and the unmanned aerial vehicle for the drones. So move on to topic C, which is employee health insurance update. I'll turn that over to Mr. Winnick, our finance director.
So, Mr. Winnick, I'm going to tell you, you have an hour and a half to get through all of this. So talk very slow. Use lots of diagrams.
Need an ESO and post-it notes or anything? I mean, we got...
I think we can run out and get those here in the first five minutes.
If you have a dog and pony show, go ahead and...
Well, if you remember, I think last workshop, I somehow filled an hour and 25 minutes. But yeah, so we'll see if we can do that again today.
No.
No, I was actually thinking going into today that, you know, with, you know, Phil having a couple of items that would have had enough discussion on there, I'd have been left with about 20, 25 minutes.
Right.
So, yeah, we're going to have jokes and everything else later on. No, I'm just kidding.
So...
But, no, Mayor...
Again, we're getting towards the end of budget, budget cycle, so...
Yeah. So, Mayor, council members, the first item that kind of want to discuss is really an update on the employee health insurance. If you remember, in the last workshop, that we brought to your attention that we had received a letter on September 30th from our insurance provider that was telling us that our rates for health insurance were going up 50%. Immediately, we engaged Gallagher Consultants, who is an insurance consultant, to do an RFP, and the results were finalized on the 26th of October. Unfortunately, things didn't come out much better. For, there is a, an attachment here that, I think it's on page seven of the 58 pages, and I can see if I can...
The chart of all the...
Of all the different insurances and, and trying to get as close to the deductibles that we currently have underneath the PEEP program. They ranged from like a, they averaged right around 58 to 60% increase versus the 50% that PEEP was giving to us. They also gave us some options where if we were to increase deductibles, we could drop down the increase. But even at that, the increases were still, I think we had one that was a, if we increased the deductibles significantly, we were at like a 36 and a half percent increase. One gave us a 40% increase, a 43% increase.
Let me, let me ask you. So, just reading this, it sounded like the rates are high because of the amount of claims that we had?
He...
And there's, insurance companies look at how many claims you have and increase your rates? So does that mean next year, if we don't have any claims, they'll go down potentially?
Potentially, yes. And that's, and I'll kind of get to that, what our philosophy is going to be moving forward into next year. Right now, Gallagher basically has told us that the one that we currently have with PEEP at 50% is our best option. You know, looking at all of the deductibles that are in there. And so they've kind of recommended that we stay with PEEP. Again, that final decision is totally up to city council here. But that's the direction that they've kind of led us to. And that's kind of interesting, too, just to kind of put a little bit of perspective onto that, is that they receive no money for what they've done unless they were to actually have gotten us a different insurance company. So it definitely wasn't in their best interest, you know, to turn around and say, hey, you know, continue with where your, your current provider. So I think that, that speaks volumes of their integrity and the process that they ran. And the recommendation is, you know, where you're at is really, you know, kind of the best that you can possibly be at underneath the circumstances. And there was, we had a call with them, and they kind of went over all of the information. There was really two factors. One, you've hit on, and that is, they do look at the claims. And I always look at it, it's like a, it's like a pay-as-you-go. And that's where the PEEP program, how it was designed before, was to eliminate that pay-as-you-go type of piece and kind of give you a kind of, the whole entire group to kind of give you a level increase from year to year. And that's where in the past 12 years, prior to this year, or prior to 2023, that they were averaging a 3.8% annual increase. Obviously, things have changed, and it's forced them to do more of what the market is, is doing. The other part to it is, is that they even came out and told us, our premiums that we were paying in the market were very, very low. So we're playing a catch-up on, as we look at the market, we're playing a catch-up of our current rate. And then on top of it, in the past two years, the 24 months, we've had higher claims.
You're saying rates are low because you didn't have any claims, probably previous?
Well, not, that's not necessarily, that's not how the PEEP program had run in the past. And the PEEP program did not look just as one entity by itself. It looked at all of the entities together and kind of did an overall average. Their underwriting has changed in this, for this upcoming year, and now they're looking at us as an individual. And part of that was driven that they lost a number of entities that were a part of PEEP that were really good performers. In other words, low claims were paying more in premiums. And when they went away, obviously, you, we can speculate that there's probably some financial hurting that's going on. So this has kind of created, A, you've got to change your underwriting model, and it's more representative to what the market does. So our philosophy moving forward now is going to be that if we go with PEEP, that'll be, 2023 will be year two of two-year contract with PEEP. Obviously, as we've informed you, that this 50% increase allowed us to get out after this year one. If we choose to stay in, we'll be in for year number two. In June of next year, we will engage Gallagher again and have them go out for an RFP, hopefully the claims. And, and some of the data, I think I'll pull it up here. Some of the data showed that our past year wasn't as bad as the year previous to that. So on this page here, it'll, it'll show you that our, our loss, the loss ratio, in other words, premiums versus claims, in the past 12 months, our premiums were about $536,000. Our claims were 602,000, about 112%. Obviously, if we're going up 50%, we're moving ourselves ahead of where our claim history has been, even for the last 24 months, where, you know, it's been a 27%, you know, loss ratio. So if we continue our trend of, of having less claims, we'll be more attractive to the market, and hopefully, it'll, it'll prove that PEEP's actual insurance will go down for us, too, moving into 2024. That's kind of what we're thinking. But if we get out with Gallagher in June, then we'll have all the RFPs back, we'll know where we're at, we'll see what PEEP offers us, and then we can actually do a very good comparative piece and choose what is the best for the city. And, and meaning, you know, really, best for our employees and at, at the most reasonable cost for the city itself, too.
Were these claims out of our control in regards to, you know, were the people who were either laid off or took something that we had to pay out? I guess I'm, I don't know if I'm wording it right, but is it something that we had no control over?
Well, technically, we, we...
I mean, these claims, were they medical claims then?
Yes, yes. Yeah. So technically, we have no, you know...
No control over...
No control over it, you know?
It's nothing that we could do, forecast or any...
No, no.
I'm just thinking, we lost, you know, some key employees the last few years. That has nothing to do with it. It's more of...
No. Unless those employees were making a lot of claims in the past, and then they're no longer part of our pool, and then the claims go down. But...
Well, let me ask you this. Was it just a couple individuals, or was it a pool of...
And we were not given that specific information. A lot of it's protected by HIPAA regulations, so yeah. And matter of fact, we, we were given information on a monthly basis, which we will not share because we certainly don't, we actually have a small pool. I think we have 25 individuals that are on single coverage, 22 that are on family coverage. And we certainly don't want an employee going, oh, I knew that you had a surgery such and such or something, and then, hey, you're the one who's driving my premiums up, and we don't want any of that. And so we definitely kept even that component out of this presentation tonight. And it's really, you know, the essence of it is, is that we went out, RFP, you know, I, I think they originally sent this out to, I think, like eight insurance agencies. A number of them just declined, and some of the comments that they were saying is, we just can't compete. And so I had done...
With what we have. Can't compete with what we have.
With the new change.
Right.
The, the 50% increase, yeah. And, because I asked that as a clarifying question. I said, so the information that you provided for, to them in the RFP, were they given what we're going to be going to at that 50% increase, and they can't compete to that? And they said, yeah. And that's where, yeah, the market is just saying, no. And so bottom line is, there's that one factor is, yeah, our rates were, in many ways, held artificially low, PEEP, and, which was a great program. And now for a various number of reasons, they've had to change their philosophy, and now it's causing us to, to drive up. And so then we actually went out to the market, and the market's saying the exact same thing that, that PEEP. So in other words, PEEP isn't out of line with their new, new change and how they're doing the underwriting. So that, that's not the best news in the world. However, this is a 50% increase. And yes, it's an increase for the city. It's also an increase for all of our employees. We're in year one of a three-year contract. The contract spells out that for, for single, that the city picks up 90% of the premiums. And for family, the city picks up 80% of the premiums. The impact that, that, that'll have on an annual basis for our employees is that, I believe for single, that would end up being roughly a, well, from an increase part to it, I think I had it in my last presentation, it was like about a $290 increase on an annual basis. I did kind of a quick calculation with what our cost of living that we had agreed to with the unions for the three years, that I think for single, it would, it would take the first, like $9,000 that they make with that 3% increase to cover the increase of cost for the single coverage. With the family coverage increasing significantly, again, for the 50%, but we're covering, their, employees are picking up 20% of it, it took something like the first $54,000 that they make at that 3% increase covers the increase in, in health insurance. Last Thursday, we had, we've now reconvened the insurance committee, which is made up of representatives from each one of our departments here in the, in the city. And so I presented the information that city council received last workshop. They did not see this information. I promised them that after, or after tonight, tomorrow, I'll disseminate this information, and we'll meet with that insurance committee again on Thursday. But I asked them two questions after I did the presentation, and I really kind of wanted to get their sense and feel of where they're at. First of all, I have, it was a quite enjoyable meeting from the standpoint, we had a couple of members who were on the prior insurance committee, and they have a vast amount of knowledge and know how things had worked and how we ended up getting to the PEEP. And so it was, it was really, it was a very enjoyable meeting. But I asked two questions, and one, one was, and I asked, there's, outside of myself, and I'm not really a member, I'm more just there as an advisory role, but I kind of asked them the question of, what's your initial reaction to a 50% increase? And, you know, I got, you know, they were shocked. They'd like to see the deductions, lower deductions at some point in time. Again, if we lower deductions, we're going to end up raising our rates even further. Committee liked the idea to work, to work together and trying to come up with some options moving into the future. Again, they realized that we're in a very tight timeframe for this year, because we have to make our decision. If we were to go away from PEEP, we have to have our decision and notification to PEEP by December 1st. We've got open enrollment that we've actually pushed off, that we won't be starting until probably just before Thanksgiving. They were just saying it's bad timing, especially with inflation and the cost of living. They're, they were very surprised that the market could do, couldn't do any better than this 50% increase. Probably the, the biggest one that kind of hit to me was, there was an individual who's on this committee who is a new employee for the city. And their comment was that even though their current, their past place of employment had higher insurance premiums, one of the reasons why they decided, that really helped push them to come to the city of North St. Paul, was because of our lower premiums, our lower insurance. And they were really kind of shocked that, you know, all of a sudden, I've taken the job, and now you're going to tell me, come the first of the year, my premiums are going to increase 50% from where we're at. I think I've talked about it in the time that I've been here as the finance director, that, you know, one of the big pushes that my past employer that we were looking at was attraction and retention. And those are the buzzwords that you hear in, in many industries. But if we look back in the past 10 years, we've seen where the benefits that government offered to employees have changed drastically. They more, they mirror the private sector in many, many ways. Some aren't as good as some of the private companies can, can offer. When I started in, in government, insurance, insurance was, was a whole different game. Matter of fact, I'll speak for my, for myself, I've locked in my health insurance for the rest of my life. That, all of that was, was phased out through the years. So my insurance is actually with my past employer. And I have a very comprehensive insurance and very low, very, very low deductibles and a very low premium that I pay for, for my coverage. That's gone away. We are now competing more than we ever have in government against the private sector. And that's where my encouragement to this insurance committee is that we're not going to be able to solve it this year, but that's where they need to look collectively as a group, get, do surveys, find out what other local governments are doing, what other businesses are doing, find out what those contributions are that the, that the employer is giving. And we need to have those dialogues and workshops with the city council to see, are we actually providing the best that we possibly can for our employees? Employees, our employees are what makes us tick. It's really what makes us extraordinary. And again, you've heard me say it, from day number one, I've never seen customer service to the level that this city provides. We listen to every resident, we respond as quickly as we possibly can. With all of that, it really did hit me, some of their comments. So I asked them one more question. I asked them, I said, because part of our dialogue that we were having is that, you know, and, and there's one individual who's on the committee who's very knowledgeable, and said, yeah, you know, insurances have been going up somewhere in the range of 8% to 10% on the market on an annual basis. Yeah, they're, they're right in that ballpark. So my question that I asked was that, what would you, with, with inflation, with the information that insurance has been going up at an 8, 8% to 10% on an annual basis, what would you have felt comfortable in seeing as an increase? And so asked all of the eight individuals on the committee, and it ranged from 10% to 20% of an increase, averaged out at 15%. So my mind just started going through and, and trying to come up with some options for city council to consider. And so I wanted to say, okay, what would that, what would that be if the city were to, you know, entertain the thought of doing an MOU for only 2023, something that's not, we're not going to set necessarily, although precedent does get set, but not to, you know, look at it for 2024? What if the city were to contribute a little bit more than the, the, you know, the 90 and the 80%? So I ran some scenarios just to kind of, for your, you know, viewing to look at, so you had an idea of what that impact would be. If you remember, this 50% increase is going to cost the city at the 90 and 80, $197,000 total. There's about $139,000 that comes from our general fund, $51,000 from our enterprise funds, and then collectively about $7,000 that come from HRA and, and the EDA. I'm going to pass out the information. I've actually kind of run it from, on the bottom, you'll see that it's the 50%, and then there are 5% increments, getting all the way to the 15% that the committee had set is, is kind of the tolerable range that, that they could, could be in. In the farthest right-hand column, where it says overall change to the city, is that incremental difference. So the city's already going to have an overall impact of $197,000. This is what that incremental difference would be. So every 5% that we would contribute, or in other words, to, to offset for the employees, would cost the city approximately, you know, $5,200. So if we were to say, A, the city will contribute a little bit more than the 90 and the 80% that, you know, and to bring it down to that it would only have a 15% impact on the employees, both on the single coverage and the family coverage, it would cost the city an additional approximately $37,000.
Say that again?
So if the city were to contribute more than what's actually in the union contracts at this point in time, so MOUs would have to be in agreed to by all the unions, but first, the city council would have to be in agreement to it. If we were to say that the impact from what employees are currently paying for their premium were to only see a 15% increase, in other words, the city absorbing the employees' additional 35%, that would be approximately a $37,000, additional $37,000 impact to the city. Could we afford it? Yes. If you, if you recall, you know, we put in the general fund, the general fund would be impacted by a total of $165,000. We put $198,000 that we really intention was to go to the street funds. But I think this is something to seriously consider from the standpoint of attraction and retention of our employees. I think it also speaks volumes for this city as an organization to say, hey, we do realize the pain of our employees, and we want to try to help out as best that we possibly can. And I keep hearing that, that new employee in the back of my head saying, you know, that I kind of accepted this job, and here's the premiums. And then all of a sudden, unfortunately, there'll be here a total of about, I think, less than four months, and we'll be increasing the premiums in their, in their significantly. And so to me, the question is, is this something that the city wants to, you know, city council wants to entertain? Maybe it's not the 15, that's why I ran in, in 5% increments, and something that we would think of. I'm going to open it up for questions and not expecting all on board right away, but if there, if there is interest in doing that, then there would eventually be a, a formal adoption, not tonight, but there would be a formal adoption to, to make that so. And again, we would end up having to have MOUs with all of the, the unions for that, too. The insurance committee knows nothing about this. This was just, came out of that. I came up with some options, spoke with our city manager, Brian, and we decided, you know, to kind of just have this dialogue and discussion, especially with what's changing in the, you know, the insurance market and kind of where we're at, and, and kind of just your own reaction, that it was pretty shocking to see a 50% increase coming and face the city. So questions?
Councilmember Peterson.
Dan, is this just this one, this next year?
That would be the intention to do it, would just be, we would craft up language with the, the help of the city attorney, but it would just be for the 2023. We would not have the language in for 2024. And, you know, frankly, we're hoping that, first, it allows time for the insurance committee to get together and start to do some research and to kind of give some alternatives, see where other, you know, private and public sectors are at with insurance and contributions from their employers, and, you know, and, and make recommendations. I don't want to commit us to moving beyond. It's not going to be permanent language change. To me, that's something that really comes up at when the union contracts themselves are up for negotiation, which, you know, won't occur for another, you know, two years after, yeah. So it would be, the, the language would be year-specific for 2023 in light of this 50% increase that, that occurred. in light of this 50% increase that, that occurred.
So for me, you know, kind of wrapping my head around an increase of 50%, we were getting a good deal, you know, the last couple of years or last year. We have no, no control over the market, what's going on out there. Inflation, you know, is out of control. Everybody is hit hard by it. I believe every country right now is being hit hard by it. The policy that we have in place right now, you know, 80%, 90%, I don't know what that looks like with other cities, you know? Where we sit with other cities? I think that's a good form of, what do you call it? Something to look at and how, how do we compare with, with the other cities? The private sector is all over the board. For me, the private sector, this is a really good deal because for me, I don't even come close to what, what this is in my own personal line of work. But I don't know what it's like out there with, you know, who are we comparing it to? What, what companies, what private sector companies we're comparing to? Is it, you know, just a general broad? I don't, I don't know what that, what that looks like. So to me, when we're reacting to the market that we have no control over, but I also understand the piece of us trying to keep the employees that we do have and the incentives that we have for the new employees coming in. I do get that. I do understand that we're in a very competitive market right now to get good employees. I don't know if this is, this might be one piece of the answers because I know insurance and probably time off are probably the two biggest things that employees are looking for to attract, you know, good employees. But I don't know if us reacting to the market, this policy that's, you know, 80%, 90%, I think that's a good incentive, the way it is right now and how we react to the market. I don't know if that's a good thing or not by giving them, by trying to keep up with the market, you know, with inflation. That's something that I don't know how other government entities are doing it. I don't know how private sector is doing it, but I know it's a cost to all of us and we're all bearing those costs right now. So those are kind of my thoughts right now, just hearing this first time. But I also understand, you know, that we're also competitive and trying to get, you know, good employees. But I also feel that this council and, you know, what we've done in the past, we've always been receptive to, to our employees. I believe that this is one piece of the puzzle, but I think there's other pieces that we offer to our employees to make them stay here. So.
Mayor, I absolutely agree with all of your comments. And, and again, there's a lot of information that, that, you know, the insurance committee is going to have to gather. And again, this was just a thought to throw out and kind of get some reactions onto it. So I thank you very much for your comments. And it does, we, we, there's a lot of work that they have to do to, so we know where things are at.
Councilmember Cole?
So I'll preface my statements before I make them, recognizing that I'm, I am wandering into this venture, first, really kind of first time hearing it, very open-minded and I have not drawn a conclusion to, to any direction. I also recognize that there are those in this room whose my comments directly impact. So please don't jump to conclusions when I, when I ask a few qualifying questions. You had referenced, so the three-year contract that we have is a binding union contract as far as the percentages are concerned. And I tried to take notes, Dan, as you were talking. You said that the increase has an annual impact for a single person of about a $290 increase totally annually for what ballpark for what they currently pay?
I, I believe that's.
Did you give a dollar amount for the family piece? If you did, I didn't catch it.
I should have, I had it in the last presentation. So let me. It's what? No.
And councilmember Cole, thank you for making that comment because my comments also, I would agree, you know.
No, you're just mean.
Well, no, no, I, I would agree because, you know, it's something that we're hearing firsthand right now. This is a workshop and we're just in dialogue right now. And those are just comments that jumped into my head when I was making those. And I, you know, I'm not 100% firm on them, but, but I think it's good discussion that we, that we do have in regards to, because this is a big increase.
So do you happen to have it or could we can, we can move on?
I just, no, I just pulled up the PowerPoint that was for last workshop. So single, it would have an impact of $291 annually. And for family, it would be $1,547 annually.
I like your math. All right. So thank you. That's, that's good, that's good information for, for me to take a look at. A lot of my comments probably mirror that of Mayor Furlong and in its working between the public sector and the private sector. I can tell you in the private sector, low 70s as a percent that the insurance, that, that the employer is covering, it's good. So we're a long way apart from what we're offering here to what the private sector currently offers in my multiple years of, of being out there. So first question back is 90 and 80%, is that standard for the public sector? I mean, is that?
I, I think, I think 90 and 80 is pretty standard across the board. The part that, that enters into this dialogue isn't just insurance, it's total compensation.
Understand.
And his, so there's been a lot of research that has been done and they'll talk about that government kind of mirrors this. If you look at lower classifications in government that, in other words, that have lower minimum qualifications, will make more than you will see in the private sector. As you get into middle to lower management, it'll start to equalize. Once you get into upper management and more technical type of fields, that government usually is lower than the private sector in those areas. So part of that whole equation that needs to be looked at is, is insurance as a component that needs to be equated to what is that total compensation and how do we compare in, in, in aggregate? Especially if we start to compare ourselves to the private sector.
How recent is that data?
Well, it's, it's pretty, pretty, pretty recent. I mean, and I'll give you just kind of a, a quick example. A city manager, a county manager, that would really be considered like a CEO of a company. Obviously, you're not paying anywhere near what a CEO of a company would end up getting. Just, that's just kind of a, you know, quick type of piece. But it has been that way. And, and, you know, I mean, government has always kind of been behind a little bit, you know, as far as, and rightfully so, as far as compensation is concerned. I think the biggest change that we've seen through the years has been, once upon a time, government was fantastic because they did have absolutely excellent benefit packages, which has, has changed over time and primarily just because of the total cost that we've seen.
I'm just looking at Brian, he's going, God, I'm a CEO? Oh, boy. Yeah.
Do we know what percentage other cities are paying? Or do we know, is that public information? Is that, I mean, is, is our union, we were talking about it here. So is, is our union contract public information? And can we find that information from other cities?
Absolutely.
Because that'd be one of the first things I would want to take a look at is are we, are we aligned? With, with what the other cities are paying? Are we, is it a good thing? Are we a bad thing? Are we in the middle? That would be, that would be something I would have a question about. And if, you know, just quick back of the envelope math, 190, $291 is $24 a month. I would hope that an employee retention wouldn't leave for $24 a month.
I, I hope, I hope not either.
It gets a little steeper on the family. It's $128 a month. You feel that one a little bit more, but, you know, again, you know, I, I would hope that we offer a whole lot more than they would jump for 100, $128 a month from a benefit standpoint. So I, I appreciate the, the direction you come. You know, we, we all get hit with it. You know, I think, I firmly believe we have a strong comp package because I've heard others come on board here that said one of the reasons they came here was base pay from a police standpoint was higher than that of, that of other communities. So there's other, other reasons are coming. And so we've got 47 people on an insurance program. How many total staff are qualified or are insurance eligible?
I think we have a total insurance, I think 64. I think we have 17 that are in the opt-out.
And am I of the recollection that we pay them to be opt-out?
Correct.
And what's that rate?
$4,4800 on an annual basis.
$4,800 annually?
Yes.
Why do we do that?
I don't know the historic reason for that. I was actually.
Has it always been that way?
That covers your increase right there.
I actually don't know how that can, actually, I, to be honest with you, when I came here, I was shocked at that. Yeah. Until I had actually my employment agreement, I did not even real, it wasn't something that I ever asked for because I'd never heard about it before.
Not only did you lock into a great rate, we paid you not to take it.
I told, I told you way too much.
Thanks for being transparent, Dan, I appreciate it.
Is that a, is that a union negotiated item?
I am not 100% sure. I don't believe that it is in the union contract. I think that's a city policy. Now, if you stop and you look at it, it does save, it potentially can save the city money.
If they're all to opt in for the.
If they all opted out at $4,800 a month, I think the total, the total cost for like a single coverage would end up being, I think, like $5,300 for the city to cover. So you're saving like about $500 per employee. Obviously, in the family, you're saving a, a lot. So if an individual opts out, you're actually saving money versus them joining your insurance program.
Do we know why folks are opting out? Is it because they're getting better insurance on their partner's plans or what have you?
Yes, yes, that, that is the, the majority of those 17 did ask a number of people and that was the reason. And one of the individuals who sits on the, on the committee, yeah, goes on their spouse's plan and it has better deductibles, has lower deductibles than this plan. And this has been, you know, something that, and I, you know, wish the circumstances were, were a little bit different from what transpired today. But our police chief, Phil, is, is definitely sees this as an issue with the retention and attraction for police force, the insurance benefits that are, that are given. Unfortunately, he came from the same employer that I did and so he knows what the insurance there was. And, and in that circumstance, even, even though, I, I think it's pretty similar, that I think the 90, 80 split is pretty much similar to what my past employer had, except for the premiums are much higher.
And I think that's a different discussion in regards to the police department because of the, the atmosphere, the, you know, the, the, what's going on in the police force right now with so many people taking other jobs outside of the, the police force. I think Phil, you know, our police chief, you know, to get retention, I think it's different than your typical employee within the city here because of the type of work that is being done within the police force is kind of what I, what I see.
Yeah, and, and well.
I hear it all over for all the cities, especially Minneapolis, St. Paul, where.
I think there's, I think there's so many factors.
I think there's just so many factors out there now with any employment and.
Yeah, and, but I mean, when we're talking specifically on, on police, policing, I, I think there's so many other factors that are out there that are working against it and many of them aren't even benefits. It, it has to do with just kind of, yeah. But I'm not going to, I, I look at it as, as from a, a more of a risk standpoint. And our police officers are in a risky position. Our fire are in a risky position. I still, I would argue that our public works and our electric are in, in risky positions too for the jobs that they do. So when I stop and look at that and all of a sudden now I'm looking at, well, I just think I've covered probably about, probably more than 80% of, of staff that's in the city. And so there was a comment and, and the individual was on the police force, which kind of led me, which kind of, they kind of talked about their job and, and the high deductibles in case there's, you know, injuries outside of work or that kind of, you know, so forth. And it kind of led me to, to, it's my own conclusion that it kind of came from it. I, I kind of wondered that if, if I worry about what I potentially may end up having to pay out of my own pocket as a high deductible, does it impact the way I perform my job? That's what kind of, in my mind, I kind of thought about. And so that's where I kind of looked at the jobs that are performed in the city. I may get a paper cut, you know, I, I mean, but I don't have to put a lot of other, you know, I, I'm not putting myself necessarily at harm where I think the majority, yeah. There's the joke for the day.
You know, I've seen your office.
Yeah, that could, that could, it is a dangerous office. But.
Most of those scissors that Kerry has for ribbon cutting, they're all using those in the city, boy.
But that's what kind of led, kind of led me to, to looking at the staff here and seeing, you know, who, who has more kind of a riskier positions than, than not and where I could see that health, insurance, the deductible side to it would have, would play a more important role than in some other types of positions.
I could just get, add, before we get too far away from that, as far as the city paying out, I think the idea behind that came was, well, for one, you have to be able to get insurance. You can't just not have insurance and then get that. So the idea is then clearly they have a spouse or, you know, that they get the insurance under. So if we pay them $4,800 a year to do that, that's cheaper than having to pay $12,800 a year for them to be on our family coverage. I think that was, if I recollect properly, of why they decided to pay out for that as opposed to not. It, because it was a way to save money in a roundabout way.
But do other cities have that?
And I'm not sure about that, I just.
And that, and that is, that, again, there's a lot of information that's, that needs to be gathered and, and we will try to get as much as we can.
So, so I look at, I mean, what's here, there's not a lot we can change. I've learned a lot of things about our three-year health insurance contract through the union. From a private sector person, it's incredibly lucrative. But Dan, I heard you loud and clear and completely understand, you know, what we're up against. So my ask is let's figure out what the other cities are, but we can't figure that. That's, we, none of us may be here and, well, you, but those of us, those elected of us may not be here in three years to, to worry about the next union contract, but it's just something to, to keep in mind. Because the, the other piece too is for multiple employers that I've been with, if your spouse has insurance, they won't cover you. Your, your, your partner is covered under their home policy as opposed to being allowed to come on board with, with where you're at as well. So that would be another question that I would have of other cities. And would that, you know, you're, you know, still stay 90, still stay 90, 80, where whoever has the best insurance would take the kids, take the dependents, but that. take the dependents, um, but that, but that other partner then would be on their own insurance. You're the math guy. I didn't go to math school, so you'd, you'd be the one that would have to run the spreadsheets to find out if there's a savings to the city of doing something like, or looking at something like that as well.
Sure.
So, um, but I went way deep on, give me a time. I went way deep with a bunch of questions that we can't impact until the next union negotiation, but it was interesting information. So thank you for, for humoring me with my questions.
House member Juan.
Yeah, um, I'm also just wondering what the, um, contract is around, um, changes in wages. Are they on par with, you know, um, is the ratio similar of increase in annual wages to the cost of insurance?
To, to the cost of insurance?
Or how much people, are people getting higher wages and then thus they can pay more or less or differently for their healthcare? Does that make sense?
That makes sense, and I don't have all of that information. Most of the cities around our area, um, came in pretty close. Some came a little bit higher as far as cost of livings than what was agreed to in, in our contracts. And then obviously there's some that are a little bit lower. But we do need to find a lot of information on what the city, what other municipalities are, are, are providing as far as their contribution towards the insurance, not necessarily just looking at it from a percentile standpoint, not necessarily just a ninety and eighty, but what is the dollar value that they're contributing to it? And so we'll try to gather some of that information, um, and, you know, definitely could bring it back maybe, you know, still this year, just for some sort of consideration. Again, I plan on disseminating the information that's in the packet to the city, uh, the city's insurance committee tomorrow and then having just kind of a quick discussion. And I'm just gonna tell them, you need to start reaching out and getting some information. And that we can kind of go back and have a conversation with the, the city council. But if I, if I hear that we're not, you know, really interested in entertaining that this year, if we want to wait for a, a union negotiation, please, that, that's, you know, the message that I definitely will send too. But, and, and I, and I understand.
I think part of it, you know, we were getting a good deal, you know, last year, and now we're catching up. How do we compare now to the other cities?
Right.
Are other cities paying the same amount that we are, or are they all getting a good deal?
Yeah.
It sounds like we're catching up with what we should have been paying.
And, and that is what we've got, you know, from Gallagher was definitely kind of saying the same type of piece. And then just, you know, from, from my own knowledge on different insurances, yeah, this premium here was very, very low. But again, I looked at it from the, just from the pure standpoint of, you know, I have to play, I have to play kind of a dual role of looking at from an employee's perspective and then also looking at from the city's perspective. And so I'll, I'll throw out options. I'm not gonna make, I, I'm not gonna sit on one that you absolutely have to do this or not, but I'll, I'll try to come up with an option to, to solve this. To me, this, this was an opportunity to at least raise it, to make all of you aware, especially after that, you know, um, last workshop that, you know, we, we inform you that there's a fifty percent increase and there's a significant cost, you know, that, that's gonna hit the city. But it also hits our employees. And I, I really enjoyed the conversation, um, that the insurance committee, um, had last Thursday. And I thought, ah, you know, we'll throw something out there and see where city council's at. You know, I always look, it doesn't hurt to ask, so.
Okay. Any other questions in regards to the insurance? Regan, uh, you got any questions in regards to the insurance? Now you know your dad pays a lot of money for you to stay healthy and the whole work, so. Okay, good. Stay quiet back there.
I know when my son, son turned, was it twenty-six, when they fall off, that was his first comment when they started taking insurance out of his paycheck was.
What?
Wow, thank you. That's a lot of money.
Well, it, it is a big deal now. I mean, you know, insurance has gone up so much and the cost of health is, you know, it's astronomical, so. City manager Frandl.
Next up, topic item D is third quarter statement of revenue expenditures and changes in fund balance for the enterprise funds. I'll turn that back over to Mr. Winnick.
Welcome, Dan.
Well, well, thank, thank you very much. You did pretty good on that first item, fifty-five minutes. I think you were gonna make it.
And I, you know, and I, I'll be honest with you, you know, it was a great discussion, you know.
It is.
We need to hear this, and time goes by fast, so.
And I, and I, I have to, I have to share, I have to share a little bit of some of the dialogue that Brian and I had, whether we would, you know, discuss this or even bring this up. And one of the things that we both had said is that this council is very receptive and that we can have an open dialogue and get, you know, direction. And so kudos, because that doesn't always exist in a, um, you know, in a government. So, yeah, so I mean, yeah, it was, it was very good. So I thank you very much for, for listening to that and gave some very good insight into information that we need and, and to look at that. Getting back onto the budget, um, next, um, on November fifteenth, um, we'll be looking at, uh, potential rate and change, rate changes. It'll be, we'll be looking at the city's fees and rates. Tonight, we're gonna be looking at the enterprise. They're the last, um, of the budgets that we actually, um, prepare for. And, uh, just like we were looking at the internal service fund and some of the other budgets, uh, last workshop, the first thing they did is to kind of look at where we're standing, um, through the third quarter, so through September thirtieth, on our, uh, six enterprise funds, electric, water, wastewater, surface water, solid waste and fiber optics. And the electric fund, um, is, uh, you know, through three quarters of the year, um, is, uh, projected to, um, to do better than we had budgeted. The budget was, uh, looking at that we would actually use fund balance. Right now, at this point in time, snapshot, again, things can change, we're looking at being a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to the positive. So that's from, from a budgetary stand.
Which one, talking wastewater?
Electric.
Electric, okay, okay.
Yeah.
I thought I heard wastewater.
I was just reading out the different funds that we had had. We're in the electric fund.
Okay.
So the electric fund is, has performed better, um, by approximately, right now, it looks like through the year about a, a half a million dollars on the better side to it. The water fund, um, um, again, um, is performing better than from a budgetary standpoint, um, to the tune of about two hundred and four thousand dollars, um, better. So again, um, we're, we're looking very good from a budgetary standpoint in that fund. Wastewater, um, is about a hundred and three thousand dollars less than what we had projected. So, but still, um, you know, showing a positive projection for the year, but just not as strong as we were from a budgetary standpoint. And then surface water is performing better, um, than from a budgetary standpoint to the tune of about a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. So we're actually doing pretty good on our, on our enterprise funds.
The actual fund balance then would be that projected twelve thirty-one?
Yes, that, that would be the, that would be the change in the fund balance.
Okay.
Yeah. And so you're seeing that so far, all of them are positive.
Yep.
So we're, we're seeing increases in the fund balance. Solid waste, um, and that, you know, is just a, a little bit positive, which still is good. You know, means that, you know, we're not dipping into the fund balance to provide, um, the solid waste fund. And that's one that you'll see when we do the financial plans, not looking at making any rate changes. But we are absorbing a, a three percent annual increase per the contract, um, and we're still looking good. We've got, I think, two more years to that contract with, uh, tennis. And then fiber optics, obviously, we're showing a positive, but if you remember, that's, has a very big negative fund balance. So it'll probably take about another twenty-five years, thirty years before that becomes a positive.
We have a, a plan on that yet, or are we still just?
Yeah, twenty-five to three-year plan.
I mean, is it something that, uh, I mean, I've been dealing with it since I've been on the council and, uh, mayor and it just, what do you do?
And that's exactly it. I mean, the plan is, it's, it's a long-term, long-range plan to, to, to get it.
Sorry, you guys.
Yeah.
You gotta deal with that.
So are there any questions on the third quarter projections for the enterprise funds?
So you're just thinking the, uh, the only increase we're looking at is for which one? Rate increases or?
Oh, I will, I will get, I will get to that.
Okay.
Yeah. I'll get to that. So this was the item that was the third quarter statement of revenues, expenditures and changes in fund balance. And I'll take any questions on that before we move on.
Any questions for Dan?
I could give one caveat on that is that some of these things that on a normal year, we would have received these items that we had ordered, it is a whole different ballgame with the supply chain issues that we have right now. For example, a, a transformer can be as far as two years out that you order, which makes it really difficult when you're trying to develop in cities and need to give them a transformer for whatever they may be building, a warehouse or an apartment complex or what have you. So clearly we have stock for something like that, but we're not the only department that's seeing it, whether or not it's water or electric.
Do you say we do have a stockpile of transformers or no?
We do.
We do.
But, you know, these are issues that, things that might be ordered that would have maybe normally fell under this year's budget might fall into next year or potentially even the year after.
So let me ask you, I mean, transformers is a big deal.
That's a really big.
Uh, XL, you know, has sent out a memo in regards to, they are very low on transformers and potentially some projects that are in the pipeline, I think can, they have them right now, but anything beyond that, it, like you say, it might be hard to get. So some of these projects may not be able to happen. Do we have enough, you're saying we do have enough transformers right now to?
Yes.
If we have any projects to Lily building and, you know, any big projects that we have.
So that's a good example. Um, so they won't even know what their load calculations are.
I don't wanna tell anybody that we, like, we're, like, we have them because.
Yeah. The, uh, so we won't get our load calculation from them and their engineers until next year. And that's when it tells us what size, uh, transformer they need. So we take one from stock that might be oversized, that you really normally wouldn't put there, but it hopefully it gets you by until you can order one and get one in. But we have not seen this situation since I've worked here in twenty-some years. We've had it to where we had, uh, steel issues one time when China was buying up a lot of the steel and transformers were as far as a year out, but we've never seen it like this. This is unprecedented. So just an update for that.
Okay.
All right, next item up is, uh, the twenty-twenty-three enterprise fund budgets. Turn that back over to Dan.
Welcome, Dan.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor, uh, city council members. Um, yeah, so we'll go through and look at those six, um, budgets. And we have, uh, the water fund. The water fund accounts for activities, um, of the city's water distribution operations. We have the wastewater fund. Again, the activities of the city's wastewater, um, processing operations. The electric fund, electric distribu, distribution operations. Surface water for activities of the city's surface water management operations. Solid waste, which is basically solid waste collections operations, so which we contract out, um, and then the fiber optics. Uh, the water fund, um, we're projecting and have a budget of revenues of about two-point-one million, um, budget of about one-point-five. Should increase the fund bal, balance, um, about a half a million dollars. Significant changes, changes for the services increased approximately three-hundred-twenty-nine thousand dollars as compared to twenty-twenty-two. The twenty-two budget, um, I think my estimate was, was too low in comparison to what we're actually seeing from, historically, from past usages and utilizing the current rates. Uh, the wastewater fund, um, we're projecting revenues of about two-point-four million, budget of two-point-seven. That will have a decrease, um, in the, uh, fund balance. And a significant change in the budgetary side is, um, capital expenditures per the capital improvement plan. So this may be a fund that when we look at the financial plans, that may be looking at having a rate increase, um, coming into twenty-twenty-three. The electric fund, um, has revenues projected of about eleven-point-eight million, um, budget of approximately eleven-point-four. Increase of fund balance of about three-hundred thousand dollars. Significant changes that, uh, charges for services in the MMPA power adjustment charges have increased significantly, significantly the last half of twenty-twenty-two. So what that does is that really shows that, uh, the rate is, uh, much higher. There's a certain component part of that power adjustment that's included in our rate and everything above that is then passed on to our, our customers. And in this past half of the year, we've seen significant, um, charges coming out of the MMPA for that power adjustment.
I could add to that. That is, these are all fuel costs. These are pass-through costs of what it costs to fuel generation to get the power here. Everybody's seen that.
Are rates comparable to XL?
They are.
Or, uh, residential?
They are, and there's, they have significant increases over the next couple of years that they've just put into the Public Utilities Commission.
For us or for?
No, they don't. We're not under the PUC. That's, uh, investor owns, um, so for them.
So that's one of the, you know, biggest things I hear is that our rates are so much higher than XL when, in fact, I don't think they are, but.
A little bit for the residential, um, not extensively. Um, and we're gonna see that gap close.
Yeah, it's close, the gap is closing.
Okay.
Uh, surface water fund, uh, revenues of just under a million dollars, um, budget of about eight-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand. We should see an increase of about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in the fund balance. Significant changes from twenty-twenty-two is charges and services. Again, um, I think the twenty-twenty-two, um, u, utilizing current rates and looking at what the usage is, is a little bit lower. So we've been able to increase the estimated revenue. On a capital, or on the expenditure side, we've seen, uh, increase in the capital expenditures per the capital improvement plan of a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars.
Is it because of the amount of new housing that we have? Were estimating too low last year or?
Uh, no, I just think it's, it's just the, the, yeah, the overall usage that was used, uh, from a historical basis going into a budgetary piece. I've re-looked at everything, um, and you can see the trend has been.
The usage is more than what it, what it was last.
Yeah, that we used in our projection, yep. And then the solid waste fund, you can see is, um, you know, pretty close, but we should have a, uh, you know, use of fund balance of about, from a budgetary standpoint, about fifty-four thousand dollars. Again, the significant change there is that the vendor charges will be increasing three percent per contract, but there's no intent of raising that rate. You know, that's part of, you know, it's accumulated fund balance, um, for the solid waste and that will utilize that fund balance for that part to it. So from a, and then the whole, um, then the fiber optic, again, you know, it's on a twenty-five to thirty-year plan to, to make itself healthy. It'll have a increase in fund balance of about a hundred thousand dollars. There really is no significant changes whatsoever to the budget. It's, we've got a pretty set group of users, um, and our costs are pretty, pretty, pretty close to what they are. They get a little annual increase, but. And so then there's actually line items that I have attached for, for, for all of you to look at if you have any questions with any of the enterprise funds. I will take those now and then we're going to kind of look at, which kind of prepares us for next, um, city council's meeting when we're actually gonna be, you know, potentially having a discussion on what are the proposed rate and fee changes, um, that'll be coming into the city. The financial plan kind of gives us an indication. city. The financial plan kind of gives us an indication of where we should, or should be looking hard at increasing and changing. And I introduced that financial plan, that 10-year financial plan, back early on in the budget process, both for the general fund and for enterprise funds. And so we'll take a look. Next, if there's no other questions of where the enterprise funds are looking. I did make one adjustment, and it's highlighted on, on the pages, that I took the projected year-end fund balance changes and inserted them into the financial plans, because it's a living document that's going to change all the time. So, and again, it'll get adjusted when we do end up closing out the books for the year. And so when, first, I'll take any questions on the actual enterprise budgets, if there's something that specifically that you want to talk about or discuss on the budgets before we go into the financial plans.
My question I have is the solid waste, are we negotiating, renegotiating with our haulers soon, or is that?
Yeah.
Yeah, my qualifying question is what year of we are and what number of your contract with them. I can't remember.
I believe 2023 will be year four of the contract, so we have, I think, one more year.
Yeah, thank you. That was my question. So we are to expect 3% and 3%?
Yeah, that's the, they're, yeah, that's what's in the contract. They've already asked for it for 2023, and they gave their rates. I checked them, and there are three, exactly 3% increases. Yeah.
Any other questions?
See, on the electric fund, it's like, it talks about contractual services. What kind of services do, we don't, so we don't do any of those in-house. They're all?
Good question.
Because it, for the contractual services for the electric fund?
Is that for, like, Home Depot, or?
Excuse me. We contract out for, to do any work for us. It would have to be a contractor that might come in and bore in conduit for us, or a contractor that would come in and do some substation work. Otherwise, we do all of our other work, as far as contract work goes.
So the contractual services for the electric fund really significantly, the majority of the dollars are really for, for the purchase of the power itself?
Yeah, oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
That's why there's a $1.2 million increase.
That's why there's a $1.2 million increase.
All right.
Any other questions? Not move on?
All right. Last item up is enterprise funds, financial plans. Turn it back to Mr. Monica.
Like a different jacket, Dan, or something?
I think I'm going to take the tie off. Yeah, so I, I think back on August 23rd, and, and on September 7th, I had presented financial plans, kind of giving, giving us an idea, and again, used a, a model that the city had contracted for a number of years back, and kind of changed the assumptions a little bit. I think they were being a little bit too aggressive and having too big of a fund balance, and I told you of my, my changes that I had made onto that. So really, we're taking another look at then, really, the significant change here that happens in there is what's highlighted in the change of, of net position, which just came from those projections for year-end. So if we look at the water fund, even though it's performing very, very well, to, to maintain a, you know, to hit the, the minimum target of working capital, which is on the very bottom of the spreadsheet, highlighted in blue, and there's an over and under targeting, obviously, and we're in great position right now. But it's one of those that if you don't start making some sort of changes, then you're going to have horrendous increases somewhere down the road. So for 2023, my suggestion is we don't have a rate increase for the water fund, but beginning in 2024, we start to have small incremental increases, so we don't have to have a big, huge, huge jump. And again, these are subject to change. I know Councilmember Thorsten had brought up, you know, we, we do, we do a budget on an annual basis, but there's nothing wrong with projecting outwards to see where we're going to be. And again, just like this highlighted section in here, the, as the year goes by, and when a year completes, we're going to update those numbers with how we actually performed. So right now, I'm not anticipating it, nor will I be making a recommendation that we do change the, the water fund for rate for 2023. Wastewater, as you saw, that, you know, we're not performing all that well. The budget is actually showing the use of fund balance. And so that one really is in line for a rate increase, and trying to have kind of more of a stagnant, or a constant increase through the years, my recommendation for 2023 would be to have a 2.75% rate increase for the wastewater. For the electric fund, where we stand right now, and, and City Manager Frandl, if you want to jump in on the, the electric side, we haven't received yet what their energy cost changes could, will be. But the City Manager and myself have had some discussions, just because of where we're at with our levy increase, we will have some proposed rate increases on some of our enterprise funds, or maybe some other rates that'll, that'll be changed. Department heads are looking at them currently to get those prepared, that would, no matter, unless there's a significant, significant increase, if it's only in the 2% to 3% range, we would just not recommend an increase in 2023, but then we would have to look at increases coming up in the future years.
No increase, electric fund, at this time?
At this time, yeah.
Well, that doesn't cancel that out. There's potential, so. Yeah, when they, when you get closer to the end of the year, and they have a better idea of final numbers, you can get it kind of closer. But probably in July, they had brought up about a 5%. That has come down a little bit, so we're hoping that it's going to be more in the 3, 4, and then, but what we potentially looking at, and that we've talked about, is maybe doing a 1% or 2% increase, even if it is that. But we don't have set numbers yet.
We don't have to set those until the end of the year?
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll have a discussion next workshop, and then, obviously, there has to be a public hearing that goes with that. And last year, we did it at the same time that we approved the overall budget. And so they go into effect the first of the year. So, yeah, we still have some time to be able to. And last year, we found out the electric numbers pretty much at, towards, I think, middle half to later part of November.
I mean, do we, do we hedge? Do we go up a point and a half in anticipation? We can always roll it back the following year, or we can always roll it back if rates don't come in, but from a planning standpoint?
We certainly can do that.
I mean, I love the zero, but is the zero realistic?
Maybe a small number?
I've been listening to you. It sounds like there's something coming. We just don't know what it is.
Right, and to look at what impact it will be, and kind of make our judgment from there. But either way, it'd probably be a small 1% to 2% maybe.
We can absorb, we can fully absorb that then, without having to pass anything if we don't plan for it?
Well, I'm saying one to possibly 2% increase. If that's a 4% increase from wholesale, we could get by with that if we had to. So we're narrowing those numbers down, and the, probably next council meeting or after that, we'll, we'll have those numbers for you. But clearly, you don't want to do nothing and then turn around and do a 5, 10, 7%.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, for sure.
You just plan in a small percentage now.
Indeed.
It's a strategy.
For the surface water, we're looking very good, that in 2023, we would not have to have a rate increase, and then we would look at just small 1% increases the years after. And again, you know, based upon how we actually perform, you know, those can change, but we'll be looking at those from the information we have right now. And then solid waste, so basically, through the remainder of the contract, we would not do a rate increase, you know, and then after that, there'll be a rate increase. But so much of it depends on what the contract looks like at that point in time. So I think we just wait till, you know, we're in 2024, and we're actually negotiating that contract, you know, whether it's an RFP, or whatever it is, for services. And then there's nothing that we'll do with that fiber optics fund.
Keep the rates the same?
Well, a lot of, a lot of agreements we have are very long-term agreements. So, yeah, there's not a lot that we can, we can do with them. So actually, for the enterprise funds with, you know, cost of, you know, you know, inflation and everything, they're actually performing very well, and they're doing a very good job. And so if we do see some, some rate increases, you know, we're really looking at, you know, the electric to some, you know, maybe a percent, percent and a half. You know, wastewater is probably going to be the biggest one, you know, with about a 2 and a, 2 and 3/4% increase.
And it does make a big difference, I mean, with people's budgets.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely. Yeah. And, so, yeah, so we're, actually, those are performing and looking pretty good right now. Yes?
I'll never cease this to amaze. It costs more money to get the water out than it does to get the water in.
I'm not commenting. So I think I have approximately three more minutes, and then we have to wrap this up. So I'll take any other questions.
Any questions for Dan in regards to the, the funds?
I think I hit my quota. Thank you.
Yeah. I do like the projections. It really helps with the planning.
Yeah, and I mean, I, I just look at it as trying to keep the, if there's going to be increases, to keep them as low as possible, and kind of, you know, on an annual basis versus waiting and having some huge increase. And if we perform better, they may end up going away the next year if they're a lower part of the increase. But if you don't get them early, then you're forcing yourself to big increases later on.
Harder to.
Yeah, it's harder to get caught up.
All right. Any other questions for Dan? City Manager Frandl?
Nothing further.
Okay. Any other comments, Dan, or you got?
Just a pleasure, once again, to, to present in front of this group, and I really do enjoy the dialogue and the questions, because it gives me different insight all the time. So I thank you very much for, for your time and, and the open dialogue. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Wong.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cole. Any discussion? Now, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned for a few minutes.